Can we report out that there were no votes taken?
Yeah, I will. There was no votes taken in the executive session, it was a personnel matter only, so that's that. Need a motion to come out of the executive session?
Make that motion.
Yes, second.
Second.
Your all favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye.
Public hearing, continuing public hearing in Cascade Mountain land. Go ahead, my friend.
Howdy, everyone.
Howdy.
Good evening.
Here again, hopefully to close this project out, but I'll give a quick recap to the public. So what we have here today is a lot line adjustment of three existing non-conforming parcels. The parcels currently maintain sufficient, or some of them maintain sufficient anchorage, but none of them have sufficient lot frontage along Cascade Mountain road. What we have here today is a lot line adjustment that provides a sufficient amount of frontage for each of the parcels that, again, are existing, we're just trying to clean everything up there. One of the lots is a flag lot, so part of the purview of the board is that they get to permit flag lots via waiver. So as we were going through the application, the planning board requested that we provide a brief narrative on why we believe that the lot should be allowed to do a lot line adjustment. So for starters, I'll just quickly recap. One, the lots are existing non-conforming, so we're just trying to make that a conforming matter. We're also providing an improvement to existing access to the lot. So as the lots already exist, they can already be accessed, we are providing a more formalized access which limits cuts to the driveways for their installation and allows people to get up to the lots. One of the, and so part of their waiver includes requesting that we increase the maximum permitted driveway slope from, I believe it was 10% to 15%. So we provided the brief narrative on that explaining that if we're allowed to do a 15% slope, we limit cuts to the property, limit rock removal to the property, and we provide additional access improvements including 16-foot wide pull-offs for the fire department. And then the board seemed to take no exceptions to our waiver request, so they did ask that we get fire departments sign off on that. And what I provided in our last submission was a letter from Fire Chief Howard saying that they are perfectly fine with the 15% maximum slope, and they take no objections to that. With that, that's pretty much my spiel on this one, and I look forward to answering any questions the board may have.
John?
Certainly. Just to piggyback on what Mr. Sanders said, there's actually two waivers. The waiver would be to grant a, to allow a flag lot, and then as you had said, your direction was the second waiver is more significant, which is to allow a driveway grade of up to 15%, where 12 is required by code. Both those waivers you have the ability to grant, Mr. Sanders is correct, they're first submitted and issued the justifications for the flag lot, you sent them back, asked for additional information to justify the You sent them back, asked for additional information to justify the waiver on the driveway grade. They did make a submission to do that. I have a couple comments. Chief Howard did provide a letter, unfortunately, as is typically the case in most fire districts, he didn't sign or date the letter. It should be signed and dated for our records. And he did have one condition, and that condition was, and I'll quote it, "Driveways are engineered to accommodate our fire apparatus effectively." And essentially, they've done that, but as those of you who may recall, this is not the first time we've done this with a driveway. So, my recommendation is that the final plat should have a note placed on it that says, "Prioritizations of a building permit for any lot. The portion of the driveway serving that lot shall be graded and shaped in as-built plan provided, which demonstrates compliance with the approved profile. Additionally, arrangements shall be made with the fire district to drive their apparatus from Cascade Mountain Road to the house site, to ensure that the driveway can accommodate their equipment. No building permit shall be issued until the fire district acceptance of the driveway has been obtained." As the chairman will tell you, we've done this a couple times.
Yes, we have.
And we have to oftentimes send them back to the drawing board, just to widen things out, because it's, as engineers, we can do a lot on paper, but, you know, remember, fire guys are driving these in emergency situations, so you gotta have a little bit of built-in leeway. So, that's my recommendation in that. They do have a lot line realignment plat, which is substantially complete. They do have a shared driveway, and I just asked that a note be placed on the plat. The shared driveway shall be constructed substantially in accordance with the profile and details reflected on the shared driveway exhibits one and two. Any substantial deviation from that indicated on the exhibits shall require a return to the planning board and a revised approval. Here again, oftentimes, things get changed during construction, and that creates a nightmare because it's not what you folks approved. They did demonstrate adequate sight lines, and as a consequence, I think they fulfilled every condition that you put in front of them. And to that end, Mr. Van Cott has prepared a resolution for your consideration, if you are so inclined to entertain it.
What's your pleasure, board? Got any questions or comments?
I have one question.
Go ahead.
Well, Peter.
Hi, Ken.
My concern is the materials, and right below that lot on Cascade Mountain Road washed out, I believe it was last year, I have, I'm three lots below that, and these recent rains have basically washed out my driveway. It needs to be repaired, and my grade is only 11 to 12% in places. So, I just want to make sure that we're, I can be assured that we're not going to have water running down their driveway, it's not going to wash out in case a fire truck has to get up there, or whatever materials they're using will survive the rains we've had recently.
Yeah. So, part of our driveway exhibits, we did include additional drainage improvements, including additional culvert crossings. So, we're trying to maintain the existing drainage course of the project site, but again, any improvements future on, because it's in the SPO, we'll also go through a site plan approval process for that as well, so you'll have a chance to make sure of that.
But they did, their profiles did take into account the concerns that you had, and they did add a very significant series of interceptor swales and other things, because that site is traversed by a bunch of streams. And so, their goal was to get as much water from the driveway into those streams as possible. Unfortunately, under your code, they're going to have to pave that driveway. So, I think that addresses your concern. Might wash out during construction, but once it gets paved, things are pretty well-known to hold up a little better once they're paved.
Thank you.
Question for John. Is your recommendation that the applicant go back and get the fire chief's signature and date?
I would prefer that the letter be signed and dated, but that's up to you folks, and I'll defer. It should be a simple matter. I think the last time this happened, the chief actually came in and signed it on Judy's desk, so that would be a consideration.
Somebody can go see him in shop class at school. Nope, he's not the chief anymore.
He's not even the chief anymore?
Not the guy in shop classes.
Oh. Same guy who signed.
Different alley.
And to be-
Chris Howard's the chief, yeah.
To be honest with you, that's kind of covered in, that's kind of covered in the final conditions.
Yes.
In other words, they have to satisfy my comments before the chairman signs, so it's-
It'll be done.
Okay.
It'll be done before they sign off on it, trust me.
My concern is that, you know, if we make an exception and we allow the grade of 15% and that goes against our code, what happens in the future when we have another individual or group that wants to come in, and now we're going maybe 15, 16%? I mean, I'm concerned about that.
Yeah, this does not set a precedent. This is a case-by-case, based on the facts.
Based on the plan.
Excuse me. Based on the facts, and also based on the fire chief having signed off on it. So, it's, you know, there are sideboards on this for any future application, and you're given the authority to provide a waiver in a discretionary exercise based on the recognition that there may be circumstances where 15% is doable based on the facts, based on how it's engineered, based on the swales that John was talking about, and based on, and based on the fire chief's sign off.
I just don't want to open this up for litigation in the future. If we approve 15% grade, okay, where does that leave us?
The master plan says 15 would be the limit.
Basically, just to reiterate what Paul said, there is no precedent value. It is case-by-case in your code. And to be blunt with you, as your engineer, I would not recommend a grade in excess of 15%. And I will tell you, none of the fire districts will sign off on that, because I believe their trucks are geared-
Correct.
-to handle a maximal of 15% grade. So, I understand your concern, but you're not setting a precedent, and it's going to be on a future case-by-case basis, and they're going to be required to get the fire chief to sign off on any of these. And it's fairly common to have that recommendation. So, while I understand your concern, I think there's enough safeguards that unless you folks really see a unique situation, it's not going to happen.
Can I, I'm sorry, I just want to make a point of order after watching the town board meeting. Thank you, Leo and Rosanna, for giving us wonderful equipment here. If you're in the audience, you have to go to the microphone to speak. You can't speak from your seat, because people can't hear you if they're watching on TV. That's all.
Need a motion for the resolution.
Are we, are we allowed to?
This is a public hearing? So, you're allowed public comment?
Go ahead. I forgot, sorry.
Then we'll close it.
Yeah. Ahead of myself.
We live in a beautiful rural area that has mountains that are full of woods and wild-
Excuse me, sir.
My name is George Bistranson, I live at 3498 Route 343 of Armenia. Excuse me, I just get emotional, I guess, when I see that the town is going to build on our hills, on our green hills. This subdivision is basically allowing three houses to be built inward, out, you know, with this flag lot going in. Please use the tools that you have. No flag lots, so that we don't build on our hills. All right, I think, you know what I mean.
Is there any other public comment?
Yeah, I guess so. My memory serves that your earlier plan, 1990, absolutely states that 15 is the top, it can't go any more than 15%, so there are, as the engineer said, many safeguards to keep it from getting worse, so it's, there's no precedent involved. I think that the comprehensive plan also reflects that.
State your name. State your name.
Oh, Sharon Kroger.
Okay. Is there any other public comment? Did you see any other public comment? Need a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Your whole favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Yeah, we can move on to the resolution. Do you want to read the resolution, Paul?
Read, this is a type-two action, under the, and it's a lot line adjustment under the authority of the subdivision law. There's whereas clauses here that talk about the information that's been submitted about the grade, and also about the flag lots. So, start with, "Now therefore be it resolved, and according to the subdivision law, the planning board grants conditional preliminary and final approval for the minor subdivision plat prepared by RENIA engineering design, subject to the following conditions: approval by the planning board attorney of the proposed deeds; approval by the planning board attorney of a common driveway reciprocal access easement and maintenance agreement for access to each lot; the signing and dating of the approved plat by the owner's record following the date of last revision; the sealing and signing and sealing of the approved plat by the surveyor; the granting of permission to file from the Dutchess County Department of Health; final confirmation by the planning board engineer that the approved plat is acceptable for signing; confirmation that the applicant has paid any outstanding invoices; please note, absent an extension requested by the applicant. If all requirements of the above conditions have not been certified as completed within 100 days of this resolution, this conditional approval shall automatically terminate and be revoked without need for any further planning board action. Being further resolved, the planning board hereby authorizes the chair to stamp and sign the approved plat upon the applicant's compliance with the above conditions and submission requirements stated herein. Please note, the signature of the chair constituting final approval of the plat shall expire within 62 days from the date of such stamping and signing, unless within such period the approved plat shall have been filed in the office of the Dutchess County Clerk. Be further resolved that the approved deeds and common driveway reciprocal access easement and maintenance agreement shall be filed with the Dutchess County Clerk's office at the same time as the filing of the approved plat. Be further resolved that pursuant to the subdivision law, no changes to the final plat shall occur after approval's been given and after it's been signed by the chair. In the event that that occurs, the plat shall be considered null and void, and the board shall institute proceedings to have the plat stricken from the record to the county clerk. Be further resolved that within five days of the date of this resolution, a copy shall be filed in the town clerk's office and mailed to the applicant. Be further resolved that this resolution shall take effect immediately."
One point of order, on page, bold on page two, when the third sentence, instead of saying 180, you said 100, 100. It's printed 180. You read it as 100.
Yeah, it's 180.
No, but you read it as 100.
I apologize.
No, I just want to make sure that-
Yeah, 180 is the right number.
Okay.
Yep, yep.
Thank you.
Need a motion to accept.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Little call vote, please. Robert Boiles, junior chairperson?
Yes.
Nina Peet, deputy chairperson?
Yeah, but my name is spelled wrong.
I didn't write this.
The other Nina Peet. P-E-A-K.
Oh, no.
Foz Bullock?
Yes, we'll get that.
James Walsh?
Yes.
Walter Dietrich?
Yes.
Kenneth Topolsky?
Yes.
Jamie Vitiello?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you very much, everyone.
Thank you.
John, you mentioned specific notes that should be on the plat. Are they included in that resolution, or could you send me the language you're looking for?
You should have got that language, I think. I thought I sent it to Tom Hardy, but that's-
Yeah, I think, okay, but this is perfect, thank you.
Salo Ridge condo D and E amendment site plan. Go ahead.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Patrick O'Leary, on behalf of Salo Ridge. Here with me tonight are Michael Clark, Zach Winnick. Before, just to take a moment of your time, one thing we'd like to do is reaffirm our statements that have occurred throughout this year and the preceding year since Salo Ridge has been under new management. We are committed to working closely with the board in a collaborative manner, transparent, and work to move Salo Ridge and the community board in the future, irrespective of what may have transpired in the past. I think maybe two weeks ago, we had a little bump in the road. Those are going to occur from time to time, and we're ready to move on, be it with the condo D and E application, as well as looking forward to reaffirming and scheduling our workshop for the proposed amendments to the master plan. Up on the screen, before you revised memo, revised last week based on some comments from two weeks ago from the board. Just to clarify on it, we submitted the original memo April 9th. We revised it at that time, discussed it with the board, that once we moved ahead with future master plan revisions encompassing all of Salo Ridge and all potential, we think future revisions to the master plan, that we were committed to doing a complete thorough economic analysis and updating the values within the original EIS. The board agreed that it just needed a small, couple paragraphs at that time, put some numbers in relative to the delta between the condos and the originally approved townhouses, which we did, was submitted back on April 9th, I believe, following meeting in May. It was identified that the board concurred that the submission was complete, comprehensive, and ready to go to public hearing, excuse me, and we moved ahead under that premise. During the public hearing last week, it was identified that there were still a couple more questions regarding the memo. Once again, we're here to be transparent, work with the board, and we wanted to certainly provide any clarity that there may have been for the board members with respect to outstanding questions. I did receive some comment through Attorney Van Cott from the board. The memo is revised accordingly, in accordance with suggestions, and you have it before you. Are there any questions regarding the memo or the updates to the memo? And hopefully, it did capture everything the board was looking for. In essence, the original memo articulated a delta in a decrease in tax revenues of $48,000, but said on a subjective basis, that is more than overcome by the increased value of all the units built out there, the school taxes where there are no school children, and other factors within the community, fire trucks haven't been bought and otherwise. The board asked that we provide some more specifics on numbers to that. I went back, did the analysis comparing the 2015 projections to what is actually projected based on the assessed values, and you'll see, just for the condominiums itself, 56 units, you're actually increasing the expected revenue, projected tax revenues by $8,000. And that's just the Armenia taxes. It doesn't include county taxes, does not include school taxes, does not include fire taxes. If you did an analysis of those items, you would see a similar result. And in addition to that, if you did the analysis for all of Salo Ridge, which we'll be doing as part of the master plan, you're going to see the projected numbers are- as part of the master plan, you're going to see the projected numbers are greatly superseded by what has been built there and certainly generates more tax revenues for the community than originally projected. Mr. Chairman, I leave it to you and the board if you have any questions at this time regarding this.
John, you have anything to say first?
I defer to Paul. I'm not a financial guy.
I can't even balance my checkbook. The only thing I would mention in connection with the fiscal, just for everybody so we're on the same page, this relates to the potential for impacts on community services. So to the extent that there are revenues generated by a project, that's balanced against demand for police, fire, other services, impacts on infrastructure, roads, that sort of thing. So that's how it ultimately comes together in SEER. And I think that the idea of as you move into the master planning, really taking a catch-up look to see where we are, you know, there's a project that was originally projected to be built out in six years, this phase, phase one. And, you know, we're well beyond that at this point, and you have new folks involved and they have new ideas, and, you know, I think that's all going to be relevant, you know, just as part of your overall SEER review to kind of revisit what was done back in 2015 and see how it's working out for the community.
Any questions from the board, any of us?
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Yeah, Heimster over. Obviously, this project is about the change from 13 townhomes to 10 condos. In the last page of your document, you mentioned that the three units that are displaced at some point may generate additional revenue if additional dwellings are built. Do you have any plans currently to build additional dwellings?
I see John reaching, so I can start.
I don't want to steal his thunder, but the fact that they eliminated three units was of their choosing, they can't arbitrarily build three units, they would have to come back to you to get an amended approval.
Right.
Now, whether or not, and I think that leads to Patrick's portion of the master plan, and that I'll defer to him, I think they are now in the process of planning how they plug these additional units back in. And I don't think they've reached a final decision on that yet. So, but when they do, they're going to have to get another amended site development plan.
Thank you. Do you have any plans currently to replace those units?
Well, actually, we have plans to start meeting with the board for a workshop possibly this month on the 23rd, where we would introduce concepts to reintroduce those units. I think if you look at Mr. Andrews provided a summary of the units built, number of units at Silo Ridge, I believe there are nine units in total that through the years. I'd never referred to them as a reserve unit, but I've always left them, I call it in purgatory because I don't know where they are. There are 245 units are approved in the master plan. Those units were part of the master plan, but they no longer have a site plan which would allow them to be built today. So, the goal is to still achieve 245 units. That's what sewer, water, road network, infrastructure was designed for at Silo Ridge. And obviously, it's our task to find a way to fit those additional nine units back into Silo Ridge, and hopefully, with any luck, we'll be presenting that to you, our initial concepts for discussion come July 23rd. That answer your question?
I just had a quick question. So, when you come back in for MDP approval and revised site plan, theoretically, you're going to do a fiscal analysis that will be in current, you know, based on actual 2025 assessment rather than 2015?
Correct. But for comparison purposes, we would need to get back the numbers to 2015. We can do it in 2025, but we also need to provide the comparison because we're going to be compared with that document that was developed and approved in 2015. In addition to that, as part of the master plan, one of the goals we have through the workshops is before we go back and put pen to paper and solicit comment, things of that nature from you, we specifically would like to identify, for example, great example is actually the fiscal impact. There's numerous means and methods to develop the criteria under which you do that fiscal impact, whether you're reporting 2015, for example, 2025, and the actual numbers that you use, the actual assessed values from a given year and where we're making that comparison. For the benefit of the board, we certainly want to talk to the board and find out the manner in which you would prefer to see the information so that we can prepare the information in a format and using the numbers that you believe will be consistent and facilitate your analysis. We hope to do that for all aspects regarding the potential SEER consistency for that amendment.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I don't have a question, but I just want to give you what I think is a little guidance. I watched, I wasn't here at the last meeting, but I did watch it, even though it was very difficult with the old system. I don't think it helps your case with this community when you talk about not putting eight children in the school system. There's many, many people in this community that do not have children. I don't have children. But I went to public school, and people like the rest of us help pay for my education. So, when people in this community hear you talk about, well, we're not putting anyone in school, they're going to be angry, and we don't want people to be angry at Silo Ridge. That's all.
I completely understand and appreciate the comment. We have, the comment was only in reference to the...
I totally understood that, but I've heard it already spoken about around town, so...
We apologize and we'll refer to that in the future.
Any questions, comments?
Ron?
Yes.
Just, we should, if anything, if there's nothing more on the fiscal, I can mention the housing board.
Sure.
Yes, this is still a public hearing.
It's still a public hearing, so I don't know whether you want to take public comment first, Paul, or do that.
Whatever you'd like.
Whatever the pleasure is.
Well, yeah, is there any public comment?
Chairman, do you need to take any action to clear up the consistency statement which had a contingency tied to it relative to the public hearing?
Is this still a hearing?
Yes, yes.
We provided that information.
Go ahead, state your name.
One question about this.
Yeah, state your name.
Isn't the regulation of condominiums and other types of real estate regulated differently by the Attorney General's office, and mightn't the board need to check into that information?
Is there any other public comment? Go ahead, step up the mic.
Leo Blackman, I live in Wausau. At the last meeting, there seemed to be a discrepancy between the number of units that Silo had in phase one and the number of units that were calculated by the engineer. Has that been resolved?
I have done my best to resolve it, and I did prepare an amended summary that is valid as of the date it was repaired, prepared. I have also spoken with Patrick O'Leary, and their numbers track with my numbers. So, I'll just give you the summary. Under the master development plan, the total number of units that was approved was 245. At that time, there was a phase-one approval issue. Phase-one approval had 226 units. There was a separate and distinct phase-two, which has not been approved, has not been submitted for approval, which had an additional 19 units. That brought those two numbers to 245, as indicated in the master development plan. As of this, if they, if the board were to adopt the changes that they have proposed for condos D and E, the number goes to 217 for phase-one. So, the point is, the numbers all track, their records agree with the town's records, and I don't think there's any longer dispute. There may be disputes on how units are described and calculated, but in terms of numbers, just the pure numbers, everything seems to agree, sir.
Okay, that's great, thank you.
Can I just ask a question about that? Because your original memo, just to piggyback on, the 326 memo from you, John, had a phase-one approval of 220 units. The revised measure says 226 units with the 217, and then a nine-unit differential. But then, the materials that were submitted by Silo, by Patrick in support of this application have a revised site plan approved number of units at 245 with 865 bedrooms, whereas you have 217 at 909 bedrooms. But what you've just said is, Patrick, you guys agree on the numbers, but the paperwork doesn't reflect that.
Well, I'm gonna, you... The 220...
Yeah.
Was not the original phase-one. That was the phase-one that was approved at the time I prepared this memo, because there were modifications and revisions that occurred between the original approval and this that ended up with the 220 units.
Okay.
So, as of the 326 date, or that's the number of units approved for phase-one was 220.
Okay. Since then, since then...
Since then, they have D and E, now it's 217.
So, where's this 226 number come from?
The 226 number was the original master development plan approval for phase-one, before any modifications were made. So, if you go back to the original resolution and the original site plans that were approved for phase-one, the numbers were 226.
Okay.
I actually have, if you want to see it, this is the breakdown.
That's okay.
This is the breakdown that was included in the original documentation, okay? This was the breakdown as it was modified, phase by phase, and I just did the current one, so...
I think it's important to reflect that the reason we went from 226 down to 220 is because we've had several properties that have merged, and where there were originally approved two houses, there is one house. So, that's happened, and then I think it may have been in one of the other amendments that the board looked at. I think, was that related to condos, John?
Most of it had to do with the actual subdivisions and lots in various categories, because what ended up happening, if you recall, Silo came back of their own request. And for instance, Village Green went from, went down to 222 units. They dropped out a few. The Gulf Villas, the CM lots, they dropped off a number of lots there. They went down. So, what was happening is, they were looking at things, and the reason they dropped out lots is they wanted to make others larger to fit the houses that people wanted. So, what happened was, you had this great big master plan, and if you go unit by unit, it was 226. They came in, they went through a series of very defined and well-thought-out re-subdivisions, dropping out units. They actually tried to pick some up with condos three. Condo three went, I think, added five units total. So, there's been an addition and subtraction game, but each one of them has an approval associated with it. But the bulk of the changes were, are now these condos where they're dropping three, and the rest were either lots that were eliminated by Silo for their own reasons or the consolidations. 26, we just did, 27 and 29, or whatever it was, combined into one lot, so you lost one there. So, that's what's happened through the process. So, and it's a bookkeeping nightmare, but I've been trying to keep up on it. I went subdivision plat by subdivision plat and actually counted units and verified them, so that's how it changed and evolved over time. But the position of Silo has always been, we're not giving up on these units, folks. We'll be back someday to see if we can get them back in. We realize we got to shoehorn or make changes, but we're willing to do that when the time is right. Patrick now seems to be indicating that the time is right for them, and they may be seeking to recoup via an amended approval, the additional units. Does that help?
And the one, yes.
Just for clarity on this?
Yes.
Because John has stated that we do agree with his numbers. We absolutely do agree with his numbers. If you refer back to, I think, maybe the October timeframe when we first introduced the first MDP tracker sheet, and we said we'd always provide that to you, and we'd always provide it on the basis of a reasonable estimate of what we see happening in the future. So, we think there's a possibility that two lots may be merged. For example, if you look at the delta between John's number and my number, it's a difference of 2, 56 versus 54. There is rumor, was rumor at the time that was prepared, that there may be a couple lot mergers. We're trying to keep that open and transparent to you. So, if we take out the theoretical rumor potentials, John's numbers and Silo Ridge numbers match up exactly.
Fair. So, the numbers that are on the back of this need to be updated to reflect John's most current memo?
Correct. That sheet there reflects what may be hap- because you had requested that we look ahead and not be surprising you with where we thought the numbers may be. So, we provided that look ahead at what, where the numbers may be. Now, when we come to the master plan amendment, we're going to have to provide the numbers at that day, whatever day that may be, January 1st, 2026, and hopefully, John, Mr. Andrews, and our numbers will coincide on that given day.
And John, the only thing that still needed to be verified was actual bedrooms, right? Bedsrooms that...
I haven't gone through and done bedrooms, because basically, when this was approved, certain groups were done with certain bedrooms. And the actual bedroom count gets established when they file for building permit. So, there are some that were focused for four, they only built three. There were some that were focused for four, they built five. But they keep an internal, and I think Mike does as well, the total number of bedrooms was originally, I think, 993 or something thereabouts. And that's what water and sewer is based on. So, that's where, and Silo has been very careful because their health department approvals and other approvals track to that number. They can't exceed it. So, that's going to be, and I have the paperwork for Mike, but it's a pretty daunting exercise to go through and compare them, but I can do that.
That makes a lot of sense, thank you.
Is there any other comment? Is there any other public comment? Go ahead, Paul.
Okay, before you, if you're going to think about closing the public...
I'm going to close it, so say something.
So, yes, I will. So, on Monday, we received the advisory recommendations from the housing board. And these, I'm sure the board is going to want to take some time to consider and think about how they may factor into any resolution of approval if you get to that point. So, my recommendation would be that the board continue the public hearing and leave it open for now so that you can...
Everyone have a chance to read that. Sarah has a chance to read it, and everyone else.
Yeah, yeah.
I think it's a great idea.
The public can have a chance as well.
So, then we can come back and discuss it. But the next being, it's two weeks away, I wish I had enough time to read from now to then, so...
Yep.
We're continuing the public hearing.
Absolutely, concur, it's on our part.
Mr. Chairman, I just have to be a little bit of a stickler. You're going to adjourn the public hearing to your next regularly scheduled meeting to be held on...
Well, I haven't got that for you.
Okay, I just want to make sure.
I'm conversing with him, you know.
On behalf of Silo Ridge, we concur. We think it's a wonderful, appropriate idea to adjourn and continue the public hearing at the next scheduled meeting.
For that, I'm going to refer you now. There you go.
So, you're going to adjourn your public hearing to a date certain, and that date is two weeks from now, which would be July 23rd?
Continue on with the public hearing before this.
Do we need a motion on that?
Yeah.
I'd like to make a motion that we adjourn until the 23rd. Continue our public hearing then.
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead.
It would be possible to go out one meeting beyond that. I think there are meetings scheduled in between that may be beneficial to all parties involved to resolve.
That's fine.
To resolve.
So a month from now. August 13th.
I apologize for the interruption.
That's okay. I want to be open and transparent too.
I can see why.
Do we have a motion?
Got a motion, I need a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. With all other matters, minutes from 6:11:25. Motion to accept those minutes.
6:25 I haven't read yet.
6:11.
Motion to approve 6:11 minutes.
Has amended.
Has amended.
You made the motion?
I did.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
6:25. I don't see any room, any ultimatum. We're good, bad. Any motion to accept them?